I'm looking at me kinda funny and just.
Good evening, and welcome to the January ninth, two thousand nineteen zoning board appeals meeting. Please rise and join me in the pledge allegiance.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, to the republic which stands one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Karen Keaton.
Here.
Rudy Karen.
Here.
Ed Blake.
Here.
Melinda Torrance. Leroy Crockett.
Here.
And as Mr. Longstaff pointed out, we only have four board members, and even if the other one shows up, we'll still only have four. And so what that means is when we have four board members, when we vote, if we tie, that is a denial. So you need to think about that as if you want to proceed tonight, knowing that if we vote and it's a tie, that your appeal will be denied. And you can choose to table it if you choose so. I believe you can. I think that's fine. So first, we're gonna do the approval of the minutes from the December twelfth, two thousand eighteen meeting. Did all of the board members have an opportunity to review them? Did anyone have anything add to add, or any corrections, or anything like that?
I make a motion to approve the minutes of December twelfth, two thousand eighteen. That's printed.
Second?
I move to second.
All in favor?
I'll abstain.
And then we're going to approve the draft written decision for the appeal that we handed on December twelfth, two thousand eighteen, appeal number two six five four. Again, did the board members have an opportunity to review the draft decision, finding the facts and conclusions of law? Yes?
I make a motion to approve.
A second?
All in favor of approving?
Abstain. I didn't read them.
What's the matter with you?
I didn't have to. You got the package there.
Okay. So we're gonna get into the first appeal, which is appeal number two six five four, which is a practical difficulty appeal by the Gyrens.
Girons.
Girons, which, um, there we go. Oh, should we do this?
Would you like to step down?
Oh.
Do you want me to stick around so it's not a two-two tie?
We made him say it because you weren't here.
Oh, thank. Well, that was nice.
If he sticks around, then we don't have the tie possibility. It's up to you.
I don't care.
Okay. He's here. Good. Do you have Melinda's name printed on it?
Thank you.
That was good. Thank you. Sorry for interrupting.
Sorry for the interruption.
Where is the applicant? Okay.
They're there. Dulce, or Eddie, whoever's going to speak, if you would take the microphone, you can just stand up there. You don't have to have visual.
All right. I'm gonna ask that Mr. Longstaff introduce this appeal and kinda give us a little bit of background first.
So if the board recalls, this was originally a limited reduction of yard size variance appeal. Unfortunately, the project as planned didn't meet the criteria for just the ten-foot reduction, maximum reduction in front yard because of the depth of the porch. So we asked the applicants if they would like to table and come back with a practical difficulty variance, which didn't place that same limitation on the front yard setback. And so they took a couple of months to get their plans in order and get the application filled out. And so you now have the forty-one practical difficulty variance with basically the same eight-foot by thirty-six-foot open front porch with a second-story deck on top of that, on the front side of the building. The lot is a non-conforming existing lot record. The dwelling is non-conforming as well as it sits about thirty-one feet from the front property line. In the R2 zone, the required setback is forty feet. It is not in a flood hazard area, and it is not in shoreline overlay. And so I think go through the appeal with the Girons and take it from there.
Did you have anything you wanted to add to what Mr. Longstaff said? I mean, I know you've presented it before.
Yeah. Hi. My name is Eddie Giron. This is my wife, Dulce Giron. We basically, you know, it's like what we're gonna do is eight by thirty-six. We asked in the beginning, twelve, we was thinking, but definitely it's no. And then we reduce it to eight to thirty-six. And in the neighborhood, we see the house number fourteen, the house number sixteen, and also the house number three. Do they just get a permit? They are building a big deck in the front of it. And I don't think it's gonna be any impact different with the neighbors. We even asked the neighbors if, you know, I don't know if they have to say something or no. But we talked to the neighbors, and they really happy to fix the house because their houses, they fixed it. And we are trying to, we had to redo the exterior of the house. And then before we do the exterior, we say we're gonna see the elders do the deck, you know, too.
Perfect. So what I'm gonna do now is read the questions that are associated with the appeal that you have and ask you to just give the answers. Okay, so number one, the need for the variance is due to the unique circumstances of the property and not to the general conditions in the neighborhood.
Can you say again please, because my wife is the one to fill it up.
Actually, I thought get my copy.
Okay.
My copy.
Okay.
Yeah, but I can answer that.
Okay. Would you like a copy of the application that you submitted? Absolutely. Yep, no problem. So we're on page four. Thank you. So we're on page four, and I just read the first question.
Oh, do you wanna read the answer?
Yep, perfect.
Yeah, the porch will not affect the general conditions of the property because there are a couple of homes that have similar porches with similar dimensions or our proposed projects.
Okay, thank you. Two, the granting of the variance will not produce any undesirable change in the character of the neighborhood or will not have any unreasonably detrimental effect on either the use or fair market value of the abutting properties.
I don't think this will produce any undesirable changes on the character of the neighborhood. I think so. It will only maintain similar characteristics on the other homes and neighborhoods. We want to make it a beautiful porch, yeah, to match with the neighborhood, yeah.
Number three, the practical difficulty is not the result of action taken by the applicant or a prior owner.
No.
Number four, no other feasible alternative is available to the applicant except a variance.
Yes. I am suffering, I am in a with a disease. I cannot enjoy during the day. I stay in walking in the ocean during the regular hours during the day. It's after five-thirty. And after five-thirty, I can enjoy the breeze in the outside because I cannot expose myself to the sun. Yeah. And...
That's why I want to.
Because I suffer, you know, autoimmune disease, like I cannot expose to myself to the sun. And the only way I can enjoy there in my house is early in the morning and also after evening. And the porch, we don't have, you see the picture, we don't have any door to go outside to the front. I have to stay inside all day. And I would like to stay outside in evenings to enjoy the breeze of the ocean.
So I mean, part of this question is no feasible alternative. And so I think when we were looking at the plans, I'm kinda curious as to what other options you explored on the house, as to where you might be able to put a deck. And I didn't know, you know, sometimes we have applicants who come, you know, we say we looked on this side of the house to see if we could put a deck here, and it wouldn't work because of these issues. And so when I look at one of the plans you have, I didn't know if there was a possibility for it to be somewhere else, and if that was something that you had explored, or if this is just simply where you want to put the deck.
That's something where we're gonna put for the, have the view and basically, you know, the front of the house. On the side, we have a driveway.
Right.
We wanna go on top of the driveway, and that's the only place we really like to do.
Where's the driveway?
Yeah, the driveway is on the...
On the right?
It's a circular driveway.
On the right side, circular, yeah.
Oh, okay. Number five, the granting of a variance will result in bringing the applicant's property more nearly in conformance with surrounding properties. Yes? Now, you had said before that there are other properties around who have the second-floor decks that you...
Like the number four, things, like what deep beach, like that deep over there, yeah.
That one?
Yeah, that one. They have a deck, and even the yard is kind of shorter than we have. But they probably built it before, you know. We probably have that termination. And also another two houses down.
Back down this way?
Yeah, like more to the back. Yeah, that have a deck in the front door. These two houses have a deck in the front. That, the yellow, and the other brown, they have a deck in the floor.
Another one in the, I think it's the seventy or seven.
And the one they are doing a big project is in the beginning of the street. Then we think it's not really gonna affect the matching of it.
Number six, the granting of a variance will not have an unreasonably adverse effect on the natural environment.
Yes. We will not change any natural environment. We will make sure no arms belong to the natural surroundings and the ground. By keeping the project right to the minimum proper disposal with the ways, there is we wanna have.
And the property is not, number seven, the property is not located in the shoreline zone?
No.
No. Okay.
I can verify that.
Thank you. Does the board have any questions at this time regarding the application, the answers that they've given?
One question, just to follow up on issue, just to confirm, has there been any thoughts about locating the porch and deck towards the rear of the building, off to the side, if looking at the plan?
The reason we wanna build it in front is, I see for the view, and because she to enjoy the front of the view, the water, the ocean. And it's, you see, we just have a closed windows at the front. It's getting kind of hard moving, it's like a door or anything. When they build the house, that's how they build it back there. And we would like to have the breeze, the hot weather, have a little deck.
Oh, so we have all, actually, we have a small deck in the front to go to the front window in the front.
And the front is already a little piece of deck. You just wanna extend it a little.
Little bit patio there in the front. No, not this one. It's already there, all the way to the right spot in the staircase.
It's a little.
We have eight feet there.
It's already.
Yeah, it's already in the, but just in the first room.
We have a little bit more, like twelve. But just the little deck is like eight.
The deck is safe, but we just wanna keep it the same.
Right. Anyone else? Okay, I'm gonna open the hearing to the public. Does anyone have anything they'd like to add, anyone in public hearings? Do we receive any letters or emails?
No, neither.
Brian, no emails or letters?
We only received one email. It was in favor, I believe it was the neighbor to the left of the structure. I can't remember her name, but it was in favor of the, of their project.
Okay. I'll close the public hearing session. And now, we're gonna go through the questions and do the finding of facts before.
You can have a seat if you'd like.
Thank you. All right. Number one, the need for the variance is due to the unique circumstances of the property and not to the general conditions in the neighborhood. Ms. Torrance, would you like to start these?
Yeah, I think part of the value of the property is in that exposure to, or the view of the ocean. So I understand. And I don't, I don't see where, there is another spot where they could still maximize that. I don't know that that's... Yeah, I think it does seem to be they need the variance because of where the property is set.
I also agree that in order to maximize the use of the ocean, a variance would be required for this side of the building.
The need for the variance is due to the fact that the house is too close to the front of the road. They wanna do something in the front of it, so. Answer one.
Yeah, I would agree. I think it's the circumstances of the property, just being where it is. That's the reason why this looks like it should be met. We've seen some pictures of some other properties as well, look like they did similar things, so.
Right, I agree. You know, because the house is so close to the front that you're in a situation here where you just wanna maximize the property and do that. And other houses in the neighborhood have the same sort of porches as you've demonstrated, but they've been able to do it, and you were not. All in favor of number one being met? Number two, the granting of the variance will not produce an undesirable change in the character of the neighborhood and will not have an unreasonably detrimental effect on either the use or the fair market value of the abutting properties. Ms. Torrance?
I see it as an improvement, and not that, not that there's anything undesirable about the house now, but I believe that this would actually be an improvement and still be consistent with the characteristics of other homes that are abutting and adjacent here. So I think that number two has been met.
I agree that the proposal will not have a unreasonably detrimental effect. Its intent is, will match the neighborhood characteristic.
The granting of the variance certainly is gonna improve the neighborhood. I don't think this board will ever pass a variance, but didn't.
Yeah, I would agree. We've seen like half the houses right around there have similar features, maybe smaller, maybe larger. So there's about half the properties down there that are conforming with this and look similar to this. So I would say that's...
I agree. I mean, we just pulled up a bunch of houses in the neighborhood showing the porches in the front, you know, and I think anyone would agree that putting a porch on that would be a nice change and would improve value to the, to the properties abutting it. All in favor of number two being met? Number three, the practical difficulty is not the result of action taken by the applicant or a prior owner.
This one is the one I struggle with because this is, I don't believe that the current owners take, took any, you know, responsible for this. But whoever decided where the house was going to sit could be considered responsible. However, we don't know what the rest of the lot is like and whether or not it could have been setback further and allowed for this to happen, to been well within the range, the range anyway, I'm not sure. But I, I don't think, I don't think it's any responsibility necessarily of a prior owner or the applicant.
I agree. I do not believe it's the results of the applicant or prior owner.
The practical difficulty is required because of the location of the, of the house. It's not due to any action by anybody at any point in time.
I would think on this, probably what put this more in conformance with the zoning, who knows, was it originally built and what their thoughts process were. Things were much different back then as far as the zoning regulations and setbacks and everything. So, yeah, I believe that the action was not in applicant or prior owner.
Ms. Chairman, the house was constructed in nineteen sixty, so it was prior to.
Zoning?
Exactly.
Yeah.
Okay. I agree. I mean, we're here because of the position of the house, and the applicant did not put the house there. So all in favor of number three being met? Number four, no other feasible alternative is available to the applicant except a variance.
I think no other reasonable alternative is really available that's going to allow them to get, really, the property is really meant to be near the ocean and meant to maximize that. And I don't think there's any other practical way to do that.
I feel that there may be alternatives beyond current proposed design. Those that may restrict sunlight and views. However, if their intent is to see the ocean, current design certainly accommodates that.
If you wanna view the ocean, you gotta be facing it. It's the only place you can do it, really. I'd like to say one other thing about these things. This is down in Pine Point. And I'm sure the town within the next five or six years is gonna be going down and visiting the zoning down there like they did at Higgins Beach. And one of the big results of the zoning at Higgins Beach was to move the property, front property lines a lot closer to the road. And I'm sure the same thing is gonna be happening down at Pine Point. Consequently, ten years from now, this would be absolutely no issue. Just as a cycle.
Unfortunately, this is the toughest one. No other feasible alternatives except a variance. There could be different windows that are put in. There could be different things that happen without the deck. This is the toughest one to overcome. We're told basically in most of the classes we go to that if there's no other, this is a huge test to pass, and just about anything should really pass it. So this is one that's difficult. And I think there could be other feasible alternatives. And unfortunately, it may not be what you like, but there could be other feasible alternatives.
I'm a little bit in agreement with Mr. Crockett. I don't really feel like you've demonstrated tonight that you can't put a deck on the side of the house. You know, everyone deserves to have a deck on their property. Having a view maybe from the side would be better than none, no deck at all. You know, you could lose, you know, you can deny it today, and you'll get no deck at all. And I'm not sure what your options are then. But typically, applicants sometimes will meet with Mr. Longstaff and kind of review the options. And typically, you know, they'll sometimes, presenters will show us other options that just aren't feasible. Personally, you know, we're not supposed to so much use emotion in this, so it's really unfortunate. And I appreciate why you wanna put the deck there. But when I'm looking at the word feasible, you know, I think we all kind of, Ms. Torrance, kind of maybe has a looser definition of what feasible is. I kind of am a little bit more. I don't really feel like I've really seen any other options to do this. I don't know what the layout of the inside of the house is, you know, if there's a reason why there couldn't be a deck on the side that maybe, you know, you could at least see from the side, see the view from the end of the deck. So like Mr. Crockett, I struggle with this one. So does everyone feel that number four has been met? I'm favor on two and not.
It's two and three.
Yep. Number five, the granting of a variance will result in bringing the applicant's property more nearly in conformance with surrounding properties.
I, I think it is going to bring it into a little bit more, slightly more conformance. I mean, it looks like there's a lot of differentiation in the, the street views as we, as Brian was scrolling through. But I do think this particular style of house seems to match with a, with a front porch, seems to match more to, closely to the other similarly styled houses that are like that versus the couple of ranches that we saw that were not anywhere near like properties. And I would probably expect that we probably see some change in those over the years. I think that this does bring it closer into conformance with the similar homes in the neighborhood.
I feel that as time moves forward, there may be additional houses in the neighborhood with front porches and decks. However, I do not feel that this is currently in such a state that it is not in conformance with surrounding properties.
Without being able to really see the other properties, it's kind of difficult to answer this question. The way the house sits now is in conformance with the zoning. And this is pushing it outside the zoning pack, or something. I guess the answer to this question is no. This is a fluky question in this situation.
It's kind of a fifty-fifty. No one wants a kooky kind of house. No one wants the same house that looks exactly like their neighbors. We've seen like four or five of them down that have decks, some maybe small, five feet, three feet, ten feet, twelve feet, whatever it may be. It's half and half. I mean, I'm sure if all the other folks wanted to put a deck and tie it up, they'd probably wanna do it as well. So I don't think this changes anything about variance. It probably brings it more into conformance with some of the properties, but it's looking like the other properties without it too. So either way, I think it's fine.
Right. I think there's, I think the properties we're gonna see over the years are gonna be moving more towards this trend. We're gonna see more houses being fixed up and these sort of things. So in conformance, you know, there definitely are more houses down there that are like that. I think we're gonna see more, I think as Mr. Karen commented, and we'll see that in the future. So all in favor of number five being met? Number six, the granting of a variance will not have an unreasonably adverse effect on the natural environment.
Mr. Longstaff's comment that it's not in the zone, there's nothing that, that I can see that would change even the footprint of the house because there, the existing footprint seems to already be, be out over, you know, this is just going on top of another front porch. Is that, am I understanding correctly?
Chairman's permission, it's, it is increasing the footprint because there is a small, there is a small porch there now, but they're extending that.
Okay.
And then they're also coming out from building the upper deck as well. So I mean, it does, it does increase the footprint. And that's why, if you recall, we wanted them to demonstrate that they weren't exceeding the twenty percent building coverage.
Right, right, that's what I'm saying.
Which they're right under at, I think, nineteen point eight square, or nineteen point eight percent. So they do, they do fall within that.
My memory is serving wrong, but thank you for clearing that up. But I still, I still don't see where it would really present an adverse effect on the natural environment.
I agree. I don't see any problems with the local or natural environment.
I got no problem with that.
Yeah, there's no resource vegetation down there. This is gonna, gonna feel with. I mean, you're not gonna displace any animals or any type of plants that may be growing down there. You've already got the deck there. Lawn's probably mowed around it. So I don't see this to have any problem, yeah, effect on the natural environment.
All right. I mean, we are only extending the porch minimally. I really don't think there's gonna be an impact. So all in favor of number six being met? We established number seven, that the property is not in the shoreline zone. Do we need to vote?
Uh, yeah, it's, it's a matter of.
All in favor, number seven?
I don't, I don't know about that. Oh, I thought you said you had.
It's not in the shoreline zone.
It isn't. Oh, okay.
Okay, so procedurally, I didn't really talk about practical difficulty as much. Should I circle back? Take it down, or did I just kind of skip through too fast?
I think you need to take it up. It has already been one that didn't pass. So by virtue of that, it's gonna, it's unfortunately gonna fail. I think you need to.
Okay, okay. Okay, so because this is a practical difficulty appeal, variance, we like to focus sometimes on the definition of what a practical difficulty is. The courts kind of set out a couple of standards that they let the boards to review to make sure that they feel that the applicant has met. So practical difficulty is a case where strict application of the dimensional standards of the ordinance to the property for which a variance sought would preclude the use of the property which is permitted in the zone in which it is located, and would also result in a significant economic injury. So it's really kind of breaking down into two questions kind of at the end that we want to make sure that we've established that we've kind of covered these. And that is, are you being precluded from using something, from doing something that other people in the zone are doing? And if you are not allowed to have this deck, are you going to be having a significant economic injury because you can't build this deck? And so what I want to kind of do now is go down through the board and have everyone maybe make a quick comment on these two. That's kind of how I've done it, is broken it down to if you feel like they're being precluded from use that's allowed, and if you feel like they're gonna be suffering a significant economic injury with variance.
I don't think there's a significant economic hardship that is going to be a result of not being able to deck. And I, so I, I do think we have a, we have a problem trying to actually reconcile this and like work, even though I.
I also do not feel that there will be any economic hardship based on the ability to not trap this deck. With regard to not being able to do something in the form of the neighborhood, I believe it's due to where the building was originally built and its location to the, uh, to the roof, where neighbors may not be as.
Mr. Blais.
What are the two items again? I kind of like loss. And what's the other one?
With the chair's permission, that if you recall, we had a, a practical difficulty appeal a few, well, last year, I guess it was. The courts remanded it back. It was challenged and the courts remanded it back to us. And said that we did not conduct findings of fact and conclusions as to whether or not the granting of the appeal, that the granting of the appeal would, would both offer them a use of the property which otherwise would be precluded, and that we didn't demonstrate, or the applicant didn't demonstrate that there was significant economic injury. So we were asked to find on those two points, which is really the definition of what a practical difficulty is. And so I would, I would just offer for the board's consideration that the Girons could build a deck, a second story balcony on the property somewhere. So the variance or the lack of variance is not precluding them from that particular use. That's a use that's permitted in the, in the zone. You can have a deck, you can have a balcony, you can have a porch. Those are uses that you can have. The fact is that they want to put it on the front of the house, and unfortunately, the front of the house is already too close to the street. So that's, that's the difficulty. But it's not precluding them from having a residential use and having those types of components added to the house. It's just precluding them from doing it in that location. The second point is whether or not the, the board needs to determine whether or not the applicant has demonstrated that without the variance, they would suffer economic injury. They would definitely have, have brought out the, the reasons why they wanted the, the deck and the porch in order to enjoy the ocean air and be, still be out of the sun and so on and so forth. But that's not economic injury. That's more of a health injury, if you will, not economic injury necessarily. So does the board feel that within the, the explanations and responses that the applicant has offered, have they demonstrated economic injury? Those two elements have to show, somehow be shown in, in the applicant's application.
I have one comment to that, that this, this is the part that I'm struggling with. I assume that at the time after you purchased the house, or at the time they purchased the house, the health conditions or the health of Miss Giron was not at the stage of where this was an issue. And so their intent was that they could enjoy the, the front yard and enjoy the sunshine and enjoy the beach. And, and now her health has changed that they can't. Now, my, 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 the part I struggle with is this, is this similar to somebody needing a wheelchair ramp in the front? Or, you know, is it, not necessarily, you know, in that, in that there was a certain access that was expected, but is now no longer an option. And I don't know. I, this is, I'm just putting this out there as a comment. I'm still not sure where I stand on that point.
Mr. Blais, where do you, do you make your input? I feel like we're on you.
I'm gonna pass.
Mr. Crockett.
Well, variance is sought, we call it precluded use. I don't think it's precluding a use if you didn't have the deck. You could put mirror windows in there. You could enjoy it that way. You could get the view out there without having the deck. I understand that you've got the illness, but unfortunately, that's not something that's in here. It's not, precluding the use of it. You could, you could do it another way, I guess, without having the deck. And basically, I don't think it's gonna be a significant economic injury. I think if you went to sell your property for what you bought it for and what you look to sell it for today, you'd probably get a pretty good value because of where it is. I don't think not building the deck is gonna require you folks to have a significant economic injury, unfortunately. I mean, we have to go over what the guidelines are and adherence to them. So I would say this not being that, I don't see a full financial economic injury here.
So decks are allowed in this neighborhood. And I think we've kind of established that there is space and opportunity to maybe put it somewhere else. So we put forth today a deck that you wanted to put on the front of the house. There, you are not precluded because I do feel that there is other options on other sides of the house that you could put the deck. I mean, Pine Point is very beautiful. It's a very beautiful house, very nice neighborhood. And, you know, I really don't think there'd be any significant economic injury if you didn't have the deck. I don't think it would, and maybe Ms. Torrance can comment on this. I'm sure, I don't know how much it would affect the value when you go to resell. But I don't know how much of a difference it would be.
That's, that's kind of, it's hard to say. I think, I think at this particular point, I, I don't think we can justify the variance. I, you know, I'd love to be able to. And I think probably at a future point, if zoning changes, you know, if there are other things like Higgins Beach codes changing, I, I think it's, it's probably gonna be something that will be reasonable in the future. But unfortunately, I don't think, I don't see where we're in a position right now to, to support it.
Right, right. And I mean, you know, we're really locked into the words here and by what the courts have told us to do and the things that we need to consider when we're doing a practical difficulty variance appeal. Do I have a motion? Any other comments? I, sorry.
I'll make a motion to approve appeal number twenty-six fifty-two.
Second. So if no one seconds the motion to approve, motion to deny, motion?
Motion doesn't carry.
Motion doesn't carry?
Did you vote on this one here?
Were you looking for a second or?
What was, I'm sorry, what was the motion?
To accept it.
For the, for the whole appeal. Did I, was I supposed to?
Yeah, we need to vote on number eight as well.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Yeah.
Take a step back. Number eight. So all in favor of number eight being met? And that is the practical difficulty. Just definitely, we just want to. Opposed? Okay. So do I have a motion? All right, go back.
I'll make a motion to approve appeal number twenty-six fifty-two as presented.
Second. So we have a second.
Okay, all in favor?
All in favor. All opposed?
Opposed. It's about the deny. Sorry.
I would just, this chair, if you guys want to contact me, we can talk about some other alternatives and I can show you some stuff that might, you might want to explore and maybe, you know, maybe come back with a different proposal. Something that's, if it's significantly different than what you've proposed here, you can come back within the same year. If you, you can't come back with the same proposal in the same year. Probably nothing's gonna happen with the zoning there this year, as Mr. Blais was talking about. It would probably be either next year or the year after, if at all. But there might be some other alternatives that would still get you a view of the ocean, some outside air, allow you to enjoy the property more than you currently are. So I'll just start with that. I'm, I'm available to, to discuss it at your convenience.
Can I ask you one question?
Sure.
In the first floor, at least with the little deck we have, we are about to put like a, like a door in there, a building deck in the first floor?
In other words, just expand that, that entrance across the front?
Yeah, the first floor.
That's, that's actually part of the problem.
Yeah.
Yeah.
But it's already there. It's already the stairs.
The stairs.
They don't have a little decking part in the first floor.
So you want to just replace the stairs with a deck?
We are having to repair the house. Then we, we didn't did anything in the first floor because.
We could probably talk about that as, as a repair or rebuild of those stairs.
Yeah.
Why don't you contact me after, afterwards someday, this weekend? Yeah, we, we understand that. And, and we sympathize with that.
We wish we could do it.
It's just.
We just can't.
Yeah.
Really wish we could.
The guidelines don't include viewerings.
But if you have time, make an appointment and come in and see, we'll chat. Okay? Thank you.
All right. We're gonna get into appeal number two-six-five-five, which is the reduction in parking allowance appealed by Gerson Road Development LLC, five Griffin Road, Assessor's Map Room zero-three-three, Lot zero-five-one. I'm gonna ask Mr. Longstaff to do a quick introduction on the town.
So this is, this is one that I don't believe, in my time here, we've seen, I don't know if any of, probably Mr. Crockett or Mr. Blais may have seen one in the past. I've not. There is a provision in our ordinance. It's not within the appeals in the variance of section, section five. It's within the, the out, the off-street parking provision in the ordinance, which is section nine CF, which states that in specific cases where it is demonstrated that a particular building can be occupied or used, carried on with fewer parking spaces than required under the section, the Board of Appeals may reduce the requirements for off-street parking upon finding that such reduction will not detract from neighborhood values, inconvenience, public, or increased congestion in the street. So the backstory on this property, which I'm sure Ms. Sinclair, Ms. Sinclair will get into, is that project was approved in two thousand fifteen as a senior housing, thirty-six unit, one-bedroom units, senior housing project. The requirement for off-street parking is one parking space per unit plus one parking space per employee. They were able to generate fourteen, or create forty parking spaces, which is more than they needed. I think they needed thirty-one and, or, excuse me, thirty-seven, and they created forty. So they had a little more than they needed. But now that the market has changed and they wish to convert from senior housing to multifamily housing, multifamily housing requires one point five parking spaces per unit. And therefore, they don't have quite enough. They need about another fourteen parking spaces to meet that requirement. So they are exercising their right to bring to the zoning board of appeals a request to reduce the required amount of parking should the board find that they have demonstrated those three aspects that I mentioned a moment ago, that they're not gonna reduce neighborhood values, inconvenience to public, or increased congestion in the street. So it's the board's job tonight to determine if those three conditions have been demonstrated. And if not, then the board does not, is not required to approve the amount of parking that's there. The applicant will try to demonstrate to the board why it is not going to be possible to create another fourteen spaces. And I think that's, that's, that's the game tonight.
Thank you. Mrs. Sinclair. Thank you, Mrs. St. Clair.
I have a lot of things to hang on to tonight, so...
David, couldn't you hold the mic for her?
Yeah, probably have a mic still with the car.
Well, thank you very much, and Brian did a great job of introducing the project. My name is Nancy St. Clair, I'm the St. Clair Associates, and I'm here tonight on behalf of Griffin Road Development LLC. As Brian mentioned, Griffin Road Apartments was originally approved as a restricted senior housing facility. There are thirty-six one-bedroom apartments in this building. It was originally approved by the planning board back in 2015, and it went through construction, and in 2017, they actually added the three parking spaces that are down on the lower end here. As Brian noted, under the senior housing parking requirements in the ordinance, one space per apartment unit is required, plus a space for any staff that might be on-site. So originally, the approval was for thirty-seven spaces. Back in 2017, those three additional parking spaces were added in this lower end here. In marketing the property, if you will, for senior housing, the applicant has determined that the market conditions are not supportive for occupancy, full occupancy of the building. They actually have about twenty-two apartment units that are rented right now. Each of the leases for each of those apartment buildings, apartment units, carry a restriction that the tenant can have no more than one parking, one vehicle per unit. They are one-bedroom units. The applicants are looking to convert the building to allow a little bit more of broad market reach to multifamily housing. By doing that, they would still carry that lease restriction of one parking space per unit. The fact that it's a one-bedroom unit restricts the number of people that would be living in those units anyway, just simply because of the size themselves. But as Brian noted, in the ordinance, parking for multifamily is actually 1.5 spaces per unit. So we're left with a deficit right now of about fourteen parking spaces. And so as part of our proposal to you folks, we'd like to have the opportunity to exercise the option that is in the, in the ordinance to allow a reduction in parking requirements as authorized by you folks. With that, we would be able to then go to the planning board and ask for a conversion from senior housing to multifamily housing. So as Brian noted, we do have some site constraints that we are dealing with, so I wanted to kind of talk a little bit about that. The property, although it's 3.24 acres in size, does have some natural resource restrictions that are on it. This sort of blue area here and up in here are wetlands that were mapped on the site. We actually have a band that comes down through here as well. Too many papers in my hand here. So we actually have, there's a drainage easement that actually conveys drainage from Route One that comes down on this side of the property. So this area here are the wetlands that I talked about. All in this area here on either side are sloped areas that drop down, and there's actually a drainage course that runs down through that has this yellow line here, is actually the seventy-five foot area outside of that drainage course as it comes down through. So as you can see, we're dealing with, when we went through the original design, we're dealing with trying to keep things as tight as we can. We actually did have to get state-level permits in order to build what we had there. So our sort of development window is really more focused down in this area here. Griffin Road, this is Route One right here, so Griffin Road comes down, enters in the site, we have all of our parking associated with the building in this area here. This area here has been set aside for gardens for the residents. Each, each one of the residents has the opportunity to have a garden space as part of that plan. These three green blobs here, those are the grass-underdrain soil filters, part of the stormwater management facilities that are for control of runoff as well as treatment of runoff. So we're kind of restricted to this development area here, and we do have obviously a lot of pieces into the puzzle that need to be met in order to do that. So one of the things that, coupled with the fact that we already have restrictions on each of the units, that would only allow a tenant to have one parking space or one vehicle on the site, we'd like to be able to proceed with that conversion and maintain the existing number of parking spaces that we have on the property now.
So, I mean, we don't really have questions to go through.
Can we discuss it first?
I think what you need to do probably is, is just to look at those three items that need to be demonstrated, discuss each one of those and the merits of whatever information's been provided and whether or not that you feel has demonstrated that.
Okay, so I don't need to ask them, her, we just need to now discuss them?
Well, I mean, you can ask any questions of the applicant that you'd like.
Okay.
That's certainly, in order to, to get to an answer on each one of those.
Right, does anyone have any initial questions?
Yeah.
We did address each one of those in the, in the...
Yeah, yes, yep, absolutely.
Do the existing residents who are all seniors know that you guys are doing this?
I do not know the answer to that question. I believe that they probably do, but I don't know the answer to that question.
Certainly won't, something that you should be up and up, and I'm very concerned about that.
I'm a little curious about the timeline, as to what would, why they chose to go with senior housing and the restrictions that come with it back in 2014. I mean, it's been four years, like, maybe you can talk about the changing in market. This seems really quickly, and you know, my understanding is it wasn't actually built and functioning until 2017, if that's correct. So they've only really been operating as a senior housing for about a year. And so I don't know what happened with the planning, and I don't know if you know what happened, if there's a reason why they went with this restriction or with senior housing, if there was some behind, more behind that.
I do believe that at the time of the original permitting process for that, the vision was that this would be facilitated through main state housing, and that did not happen. And so the timeline from approval to actually going to construction was a delay because of that process. The applicants did decide to move forward with the construction of the project on a traditional basis for that, but as part of that, they've discovered that there just isn't the market that was anticipated in this particular area for senior housing, but they're confident that multifamily housing would allow them to have full occupancy there.
Right, so you're not at, they're not at full occupancy, but right before they opened, was it, when they, when they came in 2007 for the administrative approval, was it already opening and running, and they were opened and said, oh, we need right, new spots right away?
No, it was just at the sort of closure of construction.
Okay.
I guess, I don't entirely agree that the market has dried up for senior housing. Sable Hoax was just built, which is all senior housing, and there's a lot of people in there, and I think they're pretty close to getting all their units filled up, so I, I don't agree that there's no warrant for senior housing, that this needs to be changed to regular family housing. You've got, you've got places popping up, all of the places that are senior housing, and they're all in the area, Griffin, Cumberland, Fountain, Cape Elizabeth, South Portland.
So with that being said, I mean, how do you think, you know, if it's going to be senior housing as opposed to, would it affect neighborhood values? I mean, does anyone feel that, you know, there's going to be a change in the neighborhood when the neighbor is now not a, you know, eighty-five-year-old person, but a twenty-five-year-old living, because it's all one-bedroom apartments? So, I mean, for me, you know, I kind of think of neighborhood values and inconvenience to the public. What sort of renters are you going to be getting now? I would love some comments from the board.
I, I think that's Mr. Blaze's comment is basically, you marketed this to seniors for a place for them to be with other seniors, and now there could be a twenty-four-year-old kid that moves in there, playing music all night long, having a party or whatever, and the seniors are not exactly in what they bought in for when they originally bought these units. Like, did I address that the way you were thinking?
Right, well, and I also, to further comment on that, to increase congestion in the street, and I have a couple apartments, just a couple, but as soon as you rent to one person, there's suddenly two people there immediately, and two cars, three cars, and so they can't park here. Where are they going to be parking? Are they going to be parking at, you know, I know that there's a plaza right there. Are they going to be parking on the street? Are they going to be parking in people's lawns? You know, and you said yourself, it's very constricted. And so that's definitely a concern of mine, is kind of where this overflow is going to be going. I mean, that's great, they want to be functioning at capacity, but if you're at capacity, I mean, you're going to have one car for each apartment, I just, I don't see it in the two apartments I have.
We're already seeing parking issues with a couple of places in town. We're seeing parking issues with NRB that cannot, I mean, there's off-street parking, twenty, thirty cars sometimes at night, and if you ever go over to the facility right across the street behind the now Citgo Station, that's a memory care center. They basically don't have enough parking at all when it comes to the holiday season and one or two people come to visit. I don't think practically anybody that's in that unit has a car, because it's more Alzheimer's and more long-term memory care, so there may be a few, but you put one or two family members in there, that parking lot becomes impassable. Because they just, I mean, these are two things I'm already looking at the scaffold with this massive parking problems, when anything happens on the door, but NRB is every day because people are always coming.
Man, sure, if I could just add a couple of things.
Absolutely, yeah.
The applicant owns the property and manages the property, and they own and manage a number of different facilities for all types of residential throughout the state. They're very familiar from a management perspective of what they do accept and won't accept with that, and they're very proud of the work that they do in keeping their facilities in compliance with the requirements and keeping it a good place for residents to live. And so although there may be situations in other housing projects that do struggle with those issues, I do believe that the applicants are very much attuned to that just because they have such a volume of apartments that they do rent and own and personally manage for the site. The comments that you made, I do understand certainly about the growth of traffic during peak seasons. I did read somewhere about the, the rooming company and the situation that they're having with a struggle with parking. I think that when you're talking about a residential setting where the tenants have already been put on notice that they can only have one vehicle, that you do have an owner that is very much involved. I do believe that we're not dealing with an adverse impact to the general public or to the neighborhood. I know personally from going through the review process, we dealt with all the folks that lived on Griffin Road very closely when we went through the review process, very much involved and very much concerned that the neighbors are satisfied. I asked the question before I came here tonight, have there been any complaints from the neighbors about parking or anything from that? The only comment that came back was that there had been a couple of concerns about people and the speed on Griffin Road, and that's it, but not a parking issue and no other complaints. And for the manager to be able to give me that information within a matter of twenty minutes to me tells me that they're very much involved and very much on top of things, and wouldn't be proceeding if they felt that this was an adverse effect to the neighbors.
You're going to be completely changing the dynamics of this, though. So you're going to have different neighbors, and I, I guess I'm kind of taken back by the point that you can't, that you can get that to us, but you can't give us the residents that are already there, being talked to already, to find out what their concerns or thoughts would be with someone twenty-four years old moving into a senior retirement community. If you could get the other stuff, I mean, I think you should have got that as well.
Granted, that was a very good question, and I'd be glad to ask you.
Well, I think for the board to consider, I mean, when we look at inconvenience to the public, I mean, the public includes the people who are currently occupying this building, I feel. And that is kind of our job, is to think of them as well as, I know there's lots of people who are not seniors looking for housing as well. I personally have concerns about not, about the restrictions that were placed for senior housing and coming before us. I mean, I understand you're going to go before planning, and maybe that's planning thing, but before us today is us, for us to consider, not planning, for us to consider, the neighborhood values and the inconvenience to the public and the increased congestion in the street. I feel like we've addressed those. I have concerns about the values of the properties around them if suddenly, again, there's a different clientele coming in. I have concerns about, about the inconvenience to not only the people that live there, but again, the change from going from seniors to anyone, the fact that they're a one-bedroom apartment. Maybe gets a certain type of clientele.
I do also want to point out that the request tonight is strictly on parking. We're not, we have to go before the planning board to get the change in use.
Right.
And so this is strictly on the reduced number of parking spaces.
So why can't it go where the gardens are?
We've provided the gardens as an attribute for the residents in the building, and to be able to try to relocate those, we'd have to try to move and, and adjust. We would not be able, we've looked at that particular area that the gardens are, we would not be able to get the full amount of parking in that area that would be necessary, so we would still be coming before you folks to seek some sort of a reduction on that. One of the things that Mr. Crockett had pointed out is the, the new senior living facility in South Portland and how well occupied it is. And I have had an opportunity to take a look at those plans, and there are a number of residential amenities that are provided for the residents in that, and I'm not surprised that, given all the nice things that they are going to be enjoying, that that is a full facility. We want to make sure that we do have amenities for the residents in the building, and so the garden space, the ability, we have a walking trail that comes through and comes out into these areas here. That was all part of the reviewed process when we went through the planning board review for the site plan approval back a number of years ago.
How many units are currently occupied, and how many people are using the gardens right now? How are those units?
I don't know the answer to the number of people using the gardens. There are twenty-two out of the thirty-six units that are occupied.
Is anybody using the gardens?
I don't know the answer to that, I believe that there are.
May I ask what, what current rents are, and also what, what is the volume of staff or staff parking go, be needed for applicants who use?
I don't know what the current rates are. I do know that they are market rate units. And as far as the staff, there was one staff member who was onsite throughout the day to provide anything that anybody needed for the residents in the building.
With the conversion, would they have staff onsite all the time, do you know?
I don't believe that they would have an onsite staff at that point.
Okay, yep, and then to me, I'm just thinking in my head, okay, then who's going to be enforcing this one parking rule when you don't have staff there all the time? And I know it's not good to have tenants talking to each other about parking spots. I don't know if the board has any other questions?
I, I just have a few comments on this, that I, I don't, I personally don't have a problem with this. I, I think, you know, having dealt with enough people living in apartments living with them myself over, at certain points in my life, and showing a great number of people properties over the years, and I think people tend to gravitate towards communities that do have similar features for them or similar populations to them. I think that, you know, we're talking about a difference of having a minimum age restriction of, what, sixty-two?
Fifty-five.
Fifty-five.
I'm old enough to look that up.
So fifty-five. We're talking about, yeah, so we're talking about fifty-five plus versus, you know, eighteen plus. I don't think you're necessarily going to see a lot of people that are in the, you know, the young college-age kids or whatever renting here, or I think you're, you're looking, you know, and especially if there is a parking rule with, that's only going to allow for one vehicle per unit, I think what you're going to see is professional use, senior, still senior use. And I think it's, one of the things that has been noted in a lot of articles that I've read recently, have been, you know, trying to get these, incorporating our, our senior populations with our, our earlier-aged populations to try to, to allow for communities that actually do have, have an interaction of the two. I don't, I don't see where this, if the rules are enforced, and if the rules are agreed to and, and expressed clearly upfront, I don't see where there's a problem with this. I'd like to see the planning board be able to make a decision on this versus us. I don't believe that there'd be any increase in, in convenience to the public. I, I think, you know, when you put in a one-bedroom... I think, you know, when you put in a one-bedroom place, you're not going to get, you know, one-bedroom senior housing could have two people per unit, just the same as one-bedroom non-senior housing. And, you know, with way Uber is these days, we're seeing a lot more younger people even without cars. So I don't see where that would even make a difference. And increased congestion, if you don't have, I've seen senior housing that has had more traffic than non-senior housing because you have, you know, caregivers, medical personnel coming in, you know, physical therapists and things like that that'll come to the home or whatever. I see where you can have just as much traffic from that population as the younger population. So I honestly, I think part of my issue is I don't necessarily agree that the initial planning should have been that there should be a reduction for senior housing. You know, I think parking is important, but I also don't, I don't see where this would be too few spaces. You know, I think that there is an issue of you're gonna have to make sure that there's some way of monitoring it, and I don't know that that's something we can put any kind of restriction on. I think that's, again, for the planning board to kind of decide.
No, and I mean, you talk about monitoring and I, to me, that leads to inconvenience to the public. I sort of disagree with Ms. Torrance. I think that you're opening up all one-bedroom apartments, which is going to attract, you know, whoever you're gonna attract. I know lots of people sign leases with lots of restrictions and lots of rules and they break them left and right. And they don't really care what they say. I think I'm concerned about, you know, who's gonna be enforcing this and how, again, this is gonna inconvenience the public of, you know, I'm gonna tow this car because they're in my parking spot and this parking lot's full, or people parking down Griffin Road because they have nowhere else to park. I really see this being an inconvenience when you want, I mean, who doesn't want to have full capacity? Who doesn't want to have a full capacity, filled apartment? But at that point, I just feel like you're not gonna have enough parking spaces. I don't know if anyone has any other questions, or any other questions, comments? I kinda wanted to read this again. But this is what we're, go ahead, no, no, go.
Yeah, just a couple.
Yeah, yeah.
Are the apartments, are its numbers?
They are not numbered on the site. I believe that they do have allocations for each unit, but there's nothing that's.
Is there at the end of Griffin Road a light or is it just a stop sign?
It is a stop sign.
I think the major variable is going from seniors to younger folks. Younger folks don't really seem to care sometimes. I lived across from a two-family house and there was consistently six cars in the driveway with two, one-family house with two bedrooms. And I've also had a place where I've gone to a friend's house and they had one bedroom and there were like four cars outside for that one unit. It's great if you can enforce it. It's much more difficult to enforce it with younger folks. Seniors, you might be able to say, hey, you want one parking space and that's it. I'll be like, okay, I don't, and if your rent's very reasonable, you'll get a couple of friends that will rent that together and they'll pull out couch and the one bedroom. It's just the variable of renting to the younger folks, I think, is what could cause some problems with this.
I know, and I think with thirty-six units, you're bound to get a couple troublemakers. And I think that's kind of, I think it's a little difficult, for me, this sort of seems like a planning thing. But again, I'm gonna read this because I really think it's important for all of us to understand that the Board of Appeals may reduce the requirements for an off-street parking upon finding that such reduction will not detract from neighborhood values, inconvenience to the public, or increased congestion in the street.
May I ask another question? You had mentioned that your research determined that at the flowerbeds, the garden, there was insufficient space for the number of parking spots required. How many did you find would be allowed or could you fit, even though it was less than the total?
I believe when we did the original planning, these three were not there. And I believe we were able to get, if I recall correctly, about eleven. And that would take away from the three, so we started at thirty-seven plus eleven.
To far into that diagram, is that a parking space?
I'm sorry?
The far end of the diagram over there on the other side, is that a lot for parking down there?
Here, or here?
No, I'm talking, I'm talking way on the side, at the end of Griffin Road.
Down here?
Nope, go all the way down to the end of Griffin Road.
Way down.
To Route One, that's it.
Right here. Yes, that is a parking area. That is actually associated with the retail center that is right on the street on Route One.
And so I'm familiar with this area and so I think, what I just keep thinking is people are gonna park there and walk down the street to their friends and be it even, and I don't know if that's allowed, you know, but I just, that might be inconvenience to some of the businesses up there if suddenly residents start parking up there as well.
I'm very, very concerned about changing from senior to anybody without knowing exactly what those twenty-two residents feel about the whole thing and what the neighborhood feels about it.
Right, we're not considering.
Let me tell you something about this project. Going way back, the neighborhood was not in favor of turning this, and this used to be a residential lot, turning it into a commercial lot and putting apartments in there. And I think maybe the neighborhood, over the years, has gotten a little bit complacent and say, okay, they got seniors in there, that's all right, or you start changing that, the neighbor's gonna be up in arms again and they have every right to be, every right to be.
Just to elaborate, I know we're not considering the fact that you're doing a conversion from senior, but what I think he's trying to touch upon is the inconvenience that comes with this conversion along with it. I don't think we're gonna go through any questions or vote on any sort of issues here. We're just going to have a motion, is that correct?
Well, you could.
Could we, do you wanna do the three?
You could take each of the three. Again, I have no, I have no experience with this particular.
So why don't we break this down? Should we maybe go down and have each four comment on the three different criteria here? The neighborhood values, the inconvenience to the public, and the increased congestion. So why don't we just?
Over the years, Mr. Longstaff, I think we might have had one about six or seven years ago that we had to deal with and we did go through the questions.
Patrick, yes, let's do that. So first, we're gonna talk about how we feel that it would either have an impact on the neighborhood values. Like you already have, but go ahead.
Yeah, I kind of feel like I already have two. I don't believe that a reduction would detract from the neighborhood values. I understand the rest of the board's opinions, but I, I feel like, I feel like there's, I don't feel like fifty-five-plus residents are any less likely to have visitors or additional people, you know, there's just frequently couples living in one house. So I don't, I just don't see where we should penalize somebody for being under fifty-five.
Ms. Chair, I don't know if we get it, but I don't know if we opened up the public hearing and closed it or addressed if there was any letters on this.
Thank you. We did not.
So we can decide.
Getting our former chairs here. So, yeah, let's open this up to the public. Does anyone have anything they would like to say? Brian, did we have any letters or emails?
I had one phone call, which I, voicemail, which I returned. One of the neighbors was just wanting to know what this all meant. And so I did leave him a message and explained what it all meant, that basically read him the summary sheet that you had in front. And I never got a call back or an email or any, and there was no other correspondence from the other neighbors.
And they're not here tonight?
And they're not.
And they're not, correct. Okay.
So either they, they understand and don't care, or they didn't read their mail, or I have no idea what's going on, but that's what I, but.
Okay. So now, sorry, we'll go through, and Ms. Torrance was talking about the neighborhood values. I think you did.
I think I pretty much summed up.
You did, thank you. So, Mr. Karen?
I believe that there may be negative impacts, not necessarily on the entire neighborhood, but those living on that street, on Griffin Road, due to the, due to the change in traffic. I think that's a different question.
Mr. Blaze?
As far as neighborhood values are concerned, as I said before, I think the neighborhood is under the impression it's a senior living area. And you change that to anybody and motorcycles and all that stuff and it's definitely, definitely affects the neighborhood value, no doubt about it.
I don't think this has been addressed tonight. We've got a lot of information, I've asked questions on it, there were no answers for. I think those answers need to be present and provided. I did insurance in a former lifetime. One of the first questions on the application when you're putting an apartment house under a contract for insurance is are you renting to any college students or anyone under the age of twenty-five? There's a reason that's out there.
Right. And again, we're not considering the conversion here from a senior to a multi-unit, normal living, but I think we're just kind of coming around the neighborhood values and the connotation what comes from having people fifty-five plus with one parking spot into opening this up into, you have thirty-six apartments with forty parking spaces open to anybody. I do feel like, I think I've expressed this before, that the neighborhood values may be impacted negatively because, you know, when you get people of all different ages, you know, they're just going to be, this is a pretty tight spot, they're gonna be outside more, they're making more noise possibly, parking on side of the streets and decreasing the value of the properties around them. Can we have a vote on the neighborhood values, number one?
Wait a minute.
Sorry.
Did you do inconvenience to the public or neighborhood values? I thought you were heading down the inconvenience to the public route.
We're doing the neighborhood values, which is the first one.
Okay, all right.
Sorry. Yes, absolutely.
To follow in on Mr. Prockett's questions and concerns, would it be appropriate to press the decided table so we can have a representative of the neighborhood management committee here to answer any obvious questions that you might have?
My reaction is no. I do not feel that any of the information, I feel like I have enough information here enough to decide. I don't, I would love feedback from the board. I don't know if he has, you know, data on how many parking spaces he has at his other properties. If he has other properties with one point one parking spaces per unit, I feel like if that information was available, you would have provided it by now. That's kind of my initial take. I don't know. What is the rest of the poor thing?
I think we have to respect the fact that they asked for it to be tabled.
Okay.
Without proceeding further, if that's their, if that's their wishes that they want it to be tabled.
And what sort of information you're saying you'd like to present?
Well, I think one of the key questions of Mr. Blaze that is, are the current residents aware of the proposal to move forward? So certainly that would be one of the items that the owner could address as far as any meetings and discussions or concerns that the residents may have regarding that. Certainly any further detailed information regarding these restrictions or schedule for site visits in the conversion from senior to multifamily is certainly something that the owner could provide information for as well.
Yeah, I think for me, again, we're not planning, what concerns me a little bit is it doesn't seem like it was that long ago that they were like, we want to do senior housing, there's a market, let's do it. It's almost, to me, I'm trying to understand, like, you know, did you kind of slide in there with senior housing and say, oh, you know, we just really want to build a multi-unit? And that's what the planning board, I don't know about. So I think that might be helpful. You know, I think Mr. Blaze said that, you know, generally from his recollection, there wasn't a lot of happiness about this. And so if you, and again, I think, you know, if he does this on other properties and he has the data, you know, let's see it, you know, I can't imagine renting, he has other properties. I would love to see if his restrictions on other properties with one units, where they're at full capacity and kind of what sort of issues may arise or not. I'm trying to think what other information we could get. I don't know if anyone has anything else.
I also, I would just like, I'd love to see rental rates, just because I think that that determines a lot about the population that would actually be going into a place like this.
Right.
Past conversions from use.
Past conversions, interesting.
Yes.
I think historical data, you know, what's happened when senior housing gets converted to.
If I may, Ms. Chair, also maybe, I think one of the concerns was monitoring and enforcement, if they have any more ideas on how they would assuage the board's concerns about how that's gonna be enforced and monitored and what happens if you get somebody who's all nice and smiles and signs the lease and says, oh, yes, one car, fine. And how is that gonna be enforced if all of a sudden a car starts popping up in other places? What system do they have to deal with that? Obviously, the police would have a system to deal with that, but that doesn't help the neighbors if they're constantly having to call the police because somebody's parked near their driveway.
Or five Harley-Davidsons rolling in at the same time.
I just think that those are kind of pieces of information that I heard the board have a concern about and might be helpful. So I think it's always helpful, the more ammunition you can come back with to help your case. We certainly don't want to waste your time or the board's time, so. Anybody else? Any suggestions for what they'd be looking for, I think would be helpful.
So you have fully explored putting fourteen spots anywhere else in anything that's not in flood zone or everything? I guess, you know, maybe more information as to why, you know, we can't, you know, I mean, do you want renters or do you want gardens? It's kind of like, you know, and I think, it's kind of, I think that would, I'd like a little more information as to what the reasoning behind that is, I mean.
Well, we don't even know if anybody's using the garden.
It's gonna be hard to test.
I asked the question. Well, it'd be kind of hard now to find out, but I mean, I think someone that's managing the property would have been able to show us if anybody was using it during the summer and stuff. I mean, if you've got nobody using that garden, why is it there? I mean, it's good to have an amenity, but if no one wants to use it, use it better.
Perhaps they have photographs or something.
Again, that speaks to the question Manny can answer.
Right, okay. So would you like to table this?
To make a, is there a motion?
Okay, so can we have a motion?
Motion to table appeal number two sixty-five five.
Motion second?
All in favor?
Thank you.
Thanks.
Next item.
Okay.
What we've all been waiting for.
I'm not coming back next month.
We don't, we don't have it for you, right? Thanks.
I gotta take a picture.
Oh, yeah. Wow. So as some of you may know, Leroy served on the zoning board for a long time, nine years. And we want to thank you very much for your service. I've been on the board with Leroy for three, and he's been a good member. He did a really good job as a chair and I truly appreciate him being here today for my first meeting as chair and I appreciate your help and all the feedback that you've given us.
You shouldn't ask me to sit down, you wouldn't have as many questions asked.
I'm the town of Scarborough and zoning board of appeals, this is for you.
Stand up with that nice lovely backdrop of a parking lot behind you.
Shaking hands, they're all, there they go.
Shake that, shake that.
Yeah, come on, mirror your picture here.
It's never gonna come out good no matter how many times you take it.
One more. That's a great picture.
That's a great.
You should get one of these, too.
Look that way.
Okay.
I'm gonna give him a hug.
You just gotta pluck it. Thank you.
Thank you very much, I appreciate it.
It's my path to get out of Scarborough.
Does anyone have any other, anything else to add?
Only other thing I just wanted to share with you, Doreen did a nice job in putting together a summary of two thousand and eighteen's. of two thousand and eighteen's board of appeals activities. We had a total of thirty-seven, um, appeals. And out of the thirty-seven, and this is a spread over all of the various appeals, variances, special exceptions, reduction in yard size, practical difficulty, miscellaneous appeal. We approved thirty of those, we denied five of those, and two were pending and tabled. That's, that's a lot of work, thirty-seven appeals.
Yes, so again, thank you.
Yeah, it's probably five more denials than you had the prior year.
Prior five years.
Good, oh, one more thing. We, I believe tonight had a, another board member who had applied was, um, approved by council. So I think the next meeting we will have a new board member, and Doreen, I forget his name.
David.
Bork.
Bork, David Bork, we believe is the lucky applicant, so we look forward to meeting him.
The next victim.
So hopefully, um, and, and, and again, we still have a, we still have a vacancy. So Mr. Blaze and/or Mr. Crockett is welcome to continue to serve until we re, we replace that, that other vacancy.
He's got his plaque.
Thank you.
Okay, do I have a motion to adjourn?
Motion to adjourn.
I want to be at the motion at seven o'clock.
Thank you Leroy, I appreciate it.
Thank you Ryan, I've been great working with you on the, although I am a little bit concerned about the new board member call tonight, trying to know if I was still interested in being on the Scarborough Community Services Recreation Committee. I'm like, I've heard about it for years now.
I don't know. My last chair. Question.
I think they're getting ready to approve me.
They notice a decision. Do you notice a decision?